Meeting called to order. Councilmember Clayton.
I'll call you Wednesday.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Councilmember Werner.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the open public meetings app, chapter two thirty-one, P L nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January sixth, twenty sixteen, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Items for review, we're on track. A, city manager's report on issues raised at prior council meetings.
None at this time?
Item B, items to be presented by Police Officer Yoel Fiore.
We have a request for handicapped parking space to be implemented at twelve fifteen Springwood Avenue for resident Marcella Harper Carpenter of apartment number two.
Any questions?
No.
Any concerns? Thank you, sir.
Oh, you're right, okay. Then I read it. Items to be presented by I-STAR.
Hey Melody, this is no different than the one in our packet, right?
I was given them today.
Michael, is this any different?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, Deputy Mayor Quinn, members of the council. I know my name is Fred Lappel. I represent I-STAR, which is the redevelopment area of the city of Asbury Park. This afternoon's presentation has to do with the summer experience program, which as you recall was had its inception in the summer of two thousand thirteen. We're here for several different reasons. First is to extend the United program for another three years at the discretion of the council, of course, and to tweak some of the elements of summer experience. We have tried to be as explicit and as encompassing as possible in our presentation to the council and those presentation materials and the visual aids that accompany it. David Focal is with us this evening from I-STAR and is happy to either walk the council through the elements of the program and the various tweaks that we're seeking. He also has the visual aids to help describe what's happened. But essentially, in addition to the three-year extension that's being sought, we're looking to recolorize the structures and signage, install new roofing, and to bring back palm trees, which did not do well after first winter. But we believe or hope that they'll survive the next winter. And if they don't, to substitute another available species.
Fred, if we had probably one of the most mild winters certainly than we've had, and I've been here fifteen years, what about next winter makes you think they're going to survive?
They're gonna take 'em out.
Fred, I'll just...
They're taking the palm trees out in the storm.
And this year you left them, is that the difference?
No, they went from palm trees to trees that were more natural to the Jersey Shore that died. They're gonna go back to palm trees.
Palm trees, okay.
And burden the cost on them to remove them to save them for the following year.
That's also correct.
Okay, okay.
That's absolutely correct.
You don't have to speak on it then, that's fine.
No, okay.
So if they don't survive, if the palms are brought back and they don't survive, we're gonna replace them with another acceptable species that's available in the market at this time. We would like the tree to come together. And they are those who were originally approved not only by the governing body of the city, but also by the city's planning board.
And the palms didn't survive the first year though, right?
They survived, they survived the summer.
They survived the summer, but not the winter.
They did not survive.
And for them to change from palms to another Jersey tree, they had to go back before the planning board and get permission, so they did that, so now they're asking to go back to palms.
And that was in twenty thirteen, right? I think that was before my time, wasn't it?
No, this is twenty fourteen.
Yes, two thousand fourteen, we affected the substitution.
Okay.
With the permission of the council and the permission of the planning board. We're hoping not to be back in burden year again, but, and that's why we're asking for a little bit more flexibility this time, that if they don't survive, we'll do something else that's appropriate.
What did you put in last year?
Excuse me?
What'd you put in last year?
They...
We replaced the trees. They died, we replaced them five years ago.
I know, but what was the species?
They're just, they're just, it was trees, it was planted in the plant, and so they just, they don't survive. So there's, there's wind in that location without any block, it ruins the trees, so it actually ruins the customer experience because there's no shade. So the palms weren't the best. If we own a palm tree plantation in Florida, if the cost is very denimous to us to bring, you know, to bring, you know, bring the trees up here, and we'd like, you know, your approval to be down again.
Right. And then the last element that I want to point out to the councils and the council is, if David can show you the large area map, we want to move one of the existing crude towers that's been in place since two thousand thirteen from the south end to the north end. It's lot one point two six, it's adjacent to the food truck and parking area that was created, I believe, last summer. And obviously, that's an area where there's a significant, major concentration of tourists, visitors, et cetera, et cetera. So frankly, with the location of the crude tower at present that was approved a number of years ago, is not doing anybody any good to be blocked. We think that it'll get a lot more, more attention and frankly, do its job better because it really is a form of a beacon. And we use the summer experience program to advertise the city as a whole to visitors. We think it's best suited up at the north end of the redevelopment area as opposed to the south end.
Just to give everyone some background, I mean, originally when we came up with these crude towers, the thought was it would be a good place to provide some of the adversaries with shade, so you can open up a side of them and they could, you know, instead of staying outside in the sun all day, they could have the area where they could come and get some shade.
There's a color change, what color are you going to?
Sure, so I don't have a package here, but so part of what Fred mentioned earlier is, is part of our rebranding efforts is we're, we've decided, and I couldn't get this updated at the time for tonight, but we're basically, we're dropping a waterfront, rebranding efforts, and we're just referring to as Asbury Park. And the thought is that we're trying to, you know, broaden people's exposure to the entire city, not, you know, focus so much on the waterfront itself.
Yeah, that's exactly right. The experience is the city of Asbury Park as opposed to focus only on the waterfront.
And the new sign is just down by the main building, there's only one new sign that's there?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll speak to the sign in a second, so if you're asking about the color, what we're asking to do, what we're proposing is, so you can see from this picture, you know, these are the roofs, so there's a roof for the longhouse, which is where, you know, you can go in, use the restroom, shower, I'm sorry, shower, and then there's also a restroom control right here, which also has a roof. So what we're proposing to do is keep the white here, but just add our new logo to it, and there's kind of a, an illustration in the package, which we needed.
So it's just blue, bluey, like different shades of blue?
Yeah, a darker, a darker blue. We were also requesting for the crude towers as well, it's gonna have a white background with the blue that has Asbury Park led on as well. And then speaking, speaking about the signage, something that's gonna be a little bit different than actually what we, what we sent to you on Friday, in looking at and speaking, you know, with some contractors and whatnot, the signage that we sent to you on Friday, it seems like it might be very difficult to execute and get that done in time for the summer. So what we're requesting instead is to keep the existing signage that we have, just kind of paint the background in white, and then just replace the old font and lettering with just Asbury Park.
And, and you're asking permission to do that in the alternative to the signage that was shown to the council?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right.
Any questions?
No, I got nothing.
So the only purpose for the crude tower is, it's a beacon that people can see and it might provide some shade for the workers.
Exactly right.
Well, I would also say that if you're opening the Asbury Hotel, I mean, there's an opportunity to attract, you know, you know, to, to basically cross-promote other things that happen in the city. And so for us, you know, if it's a place that people can find the advice, they'll be promoting the Asbury Hotel, other happening in the whole block downtown, you know, again, the whole, the premise, even while we're dropping a waterfront tag, it would feel like it's a little bit brand confusion and stuff, you know, Asbury Park waterfront boardwalk, you know, there are all these multiple, we're already really just talking about Asbury Park, and so what we want to do is help cross-promote everything that's happening, so it has to coincide with the opening of the tower as well. The, the north east is a very successful location, and so for us, that's why we're up with that tower up there. But we, we imagine about, you know, cleaning out things and, you know, people are watching stuff, different activities taking place, whether it's the snow pony or somewhere downtown, you know, that's a place where they can get all the different things.
Anybody else?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to review of agenda items for April twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen, the regular meeting.
Questions?
So if you're gonna, are you gonna do mine, 'cause I already got answers from Michael now?
No.
Okay.
I need to some of yours, I don't know. Joe, Yvonne?
Um, I have, I've already gotten the answers for my question.
Okay. Jesse?
No.
I have a couple. You know, I tried to review, pass some to Michael earlier. Two oh one six, two ten, resolution of the city of Asbury Park making applications to the New Jersey Local Finance Board pursuant blah, 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 and previous approvals by said board. Could you just explain this to me in the public? Brief explanation.
Sure, Mayor. The resolutions two ten and two eleven are pretty much the same thing. Whenever the city does any sort of bonding, capital programming, as a transitional aid municipality under the Qualified Bond Act, we have to get local finance board approval. This is the resolution that says that we can apply for the local finance board.
Okay, thank you. Two oh one six, two one four, authorizing the award of policies and procedure updates and accreditation of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police. So this is to get our police department accredited, which I think is great. I'm just, what's the timeframe on this?
It'll be about twelve to eighteen months.
Thank you. Two oh one six, two one five, the Springwood Avenue Park. A change order, can you just explain that?
This is for phase one. It, the, phase one is still on target to be completed on time, but they found an abandoned tank in place. The cost to replace said tank is twenty-five hundred dollars. This will be a change order to comply with state law. Under the now therefore being resolved, you'll see change order number one is eighteen thousand. That is incorrect, I'm waiting for the CFO to provide the correct information. That would be the contract cost plus change order number one for a new contract cost, so that should be fixed by Wednesday.
That's all I have.
Matters from the city council?
Um, okay. Couple of things. First, I wanted to thank our staff and the people who worked so hard to, for the rodeo, for recreation. I think it was a great success, and I want to thank everybody that came out and supported the city, and most of all, supported our recreation departments and, and our children. Second, on Saturday, we also had the opportunity to go to the Salt School graduation, and that is the school that was set up by Salt and I-STAR to staff the new Asbury Hotel. A hundred and ten students graduated on Saturday. It was a great affair, they were there with their families and their friends, and each person was recognized. So, and the beauty of it is, when the hotel opens, at least sixty of those individuals will have a job in the new hotel. So I want to recognize that. And on Sunday, the Mammoth Conservation Foundation is holding a fundraiser for the Springwood Avenue Park at Tallulah's. It's at, Sunday, May first, at five o'clock. It would be really wonderful if people from Asbury Park came out to celebrate and to support the fundraiser. They've, they've done it in the past, and in the past, it's always been people from outside of the city. So I am appealing to you, please come out and support this event. And on Saturday, April thirtieth, is our citywide cleanup. We're still looking for volunteers. There will be a shredder truck in the parking lot, City Hall parking lot, from nine AM to one. It's available for all residents, bring any documents and papers that you've been trying to get rid of and you've been holding on to. And also, at that time, there will be a table set up in the lobby of City Hall by Habitat for Humanity. If you are in need of minor repairs, some exterior repairs, you want to spruce up your property, we want you to come and sign up. And during the month of May, Habitat for Humanity will be going out and helping you to do this. It's free, it's available to any resident, so please come and sign up if you're looking for assistance. And last, on April, I'm sorry, on May seventh, the second part of the expungement seminar will be taking place, and we're asking any individual that needs assistance to please come out. And if you came out on the first time and we weren't able to help you, please come out again because the laws have changed. They changed effective April twenty-seventh, so there may be an opportunity for you. Thank you. Oh, and I have one question. Michael, what's the status of the cameras?
I don't know at this time, I'll get back to you on Wednesday.
Jesse?
Well, I'd just like to piggyback on what you said. Things go out to all the sponsors, the people that worked harder to putting the rodeo together. It was a grand affair, and if you didn't come, you missed something, you missed something that really was good, and it was good for the town. And everybody was just full of joy and happy because it was a new event that we tried. So we just want to say thank you as a council.
Uh, Yvonne hit both of mine, which were the Salt School, which was a great event, and the rodeo, and just in case John doesn't mention it, 'cause you're relatively humble, that rodeo raised more money in terms of net, we, we are going to put Asbury Park kids through camp for the next three years, which I think is the most amount in any previous either ball or event.
Hopefully, three years.
That's it.
Depends how many apply and how quick we spend the money and other things. I'll start off with the rodeo for recreation. I have to say thank you to everybody, including mayor and council, administration, Cassandra, Alicia, Cindy, Barbara Graham Wagner. I'm gonna forget people that worked on the committee, and I, she's gonna hate me, and she hates me already, Carolina Tool. We were here at the end, if, without her, we'd be here, and we still would've made a good buck, but because of her, we know we're well over thirty thousand dollars profit, and we could be close to thirty-five. We, we still have some outstanding bills, and people are still sending in checks, so if anybody wants to make a check out, it's to city of Asbury Park, One Municipal Plaza, AP New Jersey, oh seven seven one two, and the checks should be made out to the Asbury Park Recreation Trust Fund. Great event, and just, it was joyful, don't, don't believe it, took four months, but it was a good event and great people. And you cannot do any event without a great committee, so the committee deserves all the credit. Okay, so that's a positive. Let's get to the negative. Have we heard from Mr. Gary Carr?
Uh, not from Mr. Carr, but the governor's office and the District eleven Assembly people reached out to me, and they're gonna be coordinating the efforts.
Fantastic, 'cause I was gonna say, the hell with Gary, let's go over his head. So I guess we already did that. On two oh one sixteen dash sixteen, the ordinance, and that's for the, to buy vehicles, equipment, blah, 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 through a bond ordinance, which is definitely needed, but in there is an air raider. And so, we've been talking about getting air, two air raiders into Sunset Park for, way before you were here, going back to last summer. I don't want that to be pushed back because of this bond ordinance. I know we have plenty of money someplace, I'll find the money. Can, can we make sure they're up and running by May fifteenth? I mean, I know we have to get three prices, but we had, again, EC, For You, we, we had six months to get these prices, so there's gonna be no excuse if those air raiders are not up and running. And I'm gonna take a personal hit on it, and I should, because I've been telling the public it wouldn't be done.
The ordinance would go into effect if advertised around May twentieth.
But forget this ordinance, I'm saying, find the money someplace else. And I, I know all four are gonna support me on that, and I know I can find the money because on tonight's Bills and Claims, and on two months ago, Bills and Claims, we took money out of DPW for snow removal, and we have ninety-five thousand dollars sitting in an account for snow removal. So transfer that money that we took out of DPW to snow removal, put the money from snow removal back to DPW budget, and they can buy ten air raiders. So again, Michael, this is something like, you know, all this went through this last, it was a brutal, brutal summer. Anybody looked at Sunset Lake was appalled, rightfully so, and there's no excuse for this city not to be ready before summertime. So if, if you, if you say, I'll give you my credit card, buy the damn things. Okay?
They're expensive, but guess what?
My wife has a good line of credit. I, I don't, but my wife does.
So you're spending your wife's money, not your money?
Don't tell her. Uh, okay, last thing. I, I know DPW is doing a survey on all our signs, and that's gonna take forever. Meanwhile, what can we do as the governing body, setting policy, saying, meanwhile, as we're doing the survey, can you please take down the signs of every park that says no picnics tomorrow?
Wouldn't we have to rescind the ordinance?
Depends on what, it depends on if it's ordinance.
I doubt if it is an ordinance, I mean, it's two nuts and two bolts in a screwdriver.
Okay.
No picnics, take them down, if possible, as soon as possible, please. That's all I have, thank you.
Matters from the city manager?
Thank you. There's three rather quick things. Number one on the list is the Estoppel certification for Madison Marquette. Madison Marquette needs, in simple terms, a document stating that they're not in default on certain aspects of their agreement. We are, at this time, Carl's researching it, not sure if it needs a council resolution or it can just be signed by myself administratively, so we have it here just in case for either one. Arcade regulations, I've been approached with, and we talked about this approximately a month ago, from a business about changing the arcade regulations in the central business district. The planner is working on it, we've had some discussions. This has been part of the larger central business district plan amendments, and that should be forthcoming in the next month or so. And the parking consultant requests for proposal. The parking committee has reviewed it, myself, deputy mayor, and deputy mayor meeting with the state fiscal monitor tomorrow, where we'll have a brief discussion on that, and there should be some sort of recommendation either Wednesday or the next council meeting, the first one in, in May. That's all.
Matters from the city attorney?
If there's gonna be a recommendation for Wednesday, since I can't make tomorrow's meeting because I'll be in Trenton, just email us all, please, before Wednesday, because I have problems with the RFP as it, as it stands. Thank you.
Matters from the city attorney?
No matters, thank you.
May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker?
Move it.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Werner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning may terminate any further comments from that speaker. When you come to the mic, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Ms. Harper, and this question is for Ms. Clayton. The message that she gave about the expungement, the laws have changed, I'm interested in that. Could you give me that date again, please?
I'm sorry, can I give you?
The, the date when the laws were expunged, April twenty-first?
April twenty-seventh, April twenty-seventh.
April twenty-seventh.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, but if you can come out to St. Stephen's Church on April seventh?
No, May seventh.
May seventh, thank you. May seventh at twelve o'clock.
All right.
That's, we can give you all the information you need and help you fill out paperwork.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
They changed, but they're still not great, and that's why these are great meetings being held by everybody, by the school system, by ourselves, at the church, and the problem is, it's not a problem, what we have to do is we have to get in touch with our state legislators because it's a state law, so for us to change them even more, because some of the laws are like fifty years old and have to be brought up to date. So the more people we get to attend, sign the petition to send to Trenton, the better off everybody is.
It's appreciative cause. I used to work for a transitional household, and the household still stands, it's in Asbury Park, it's known as the Kane Wright House, and I'm quite sure a lot of those, you know, people would like to have the information on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Kane Wright House is a really great organization.
Yes, it is.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jackie Papas, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to let the public know and the council know that Councilwoman Clayton and I have been working once again on Paint the Town Pink for Asbury Park. We'll be sending out some details, and you'll get some from Hannah and myself about different programs, but I wanted to take this opportunity to let people know that on the business community side, we are launching a contest slash exhibit, and it's going to be called Bravo. And we have fifteen to twenty businesses that will be participating, and they will be creating a brassiere that will hang in their window for the whole month of May, that will be an awareness campaign for getting an annual mammography. So if you have done that, then congratulations. If you have not done that, then get some inspiration with our local businesses the whole month of May. They will be installed the first week of May, and the contest will end and be judged, and awards given to the winning businesses on first Saturday in May. And we'll cut the ribbon on that exhibit that will last the whole month of May, along with some other festivities going on during the month, and lots of pink all over town. So if you're a resident or a business, take the month of May and pink up your place. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's a great idea, Jackie.
I'm not gonna say what the new owner of Pink Elephant said.
You know Bob's elephant?
At bras.
Tracy Rogers, nine hundred block Monroe. I want to first thank the mayor for the rodeo. I heard it was fantastic. I actually had a meeting in the Bronx, so I couldn't make it, but I heard it was fantastic, and maybe you should do another one. I would like to see you in a tux, maybe do a ball, which you say you don't like, I think you'd look great in a tux. And I think we realize when we work together, the situation with the Salt Hotel, when we all get out there and we push for the residents to be involved and work together, you get the result of what you had, a hundred and ten people coming out of the school, and sixty residents gonna be working for the city, and I think that's gonna make them proud and also the city proud. So I look forward to that, and I appreciate, you know, the fact that you guys got involved to try to make that happen. I have a question about Springwood Avenue Park. I want to know where most of that money for the park came from, and what account, where it was taken out of. And also, just following up on... And also, just following up on, um, what else? Getting, um, excuse me, I lost my train of thought. Uh, just following up on, oh, on, um, getting us together for the cleanup for the summer, I mean, uh, for April thirtieth. If we can all communicate to get everybody out there and with Habitat Humanity coming out to spruce up houses, I hope everyone takes advantage of that because, uh, you know, people, seniors, elderly people, they don't have the money. And if we can also volunteer to help out with Habitat, it would be great.
Thank you, Tracy. Do you want to answer where the money came from?
There were about five or six different funding sources, um, involved in both phase one and phase two. Um, I'll get a breakdown in for, for Wednesday of which ones have been drawn down and where they stand because it was multiple sources. Conservation, community development, open space, there was various ones that were used.
With three Mammoth County grants, uh, some CDBG money, but Mike will give you all of it.
But you also know that some, some of the, uh, part of the two million dollars that was given to the city from Asbury Partners or I Star was also used for that funding.
I'm not gonna answer that now, Mike will give you, because that was before any of us were up there. I, I, I can't honestly say where Mayor and Council spent that two million dollars in the past.
No, it was drawn, it was drawn down under this council. Money was drawn out of that account.
It has been?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a new one on me too.
And I just wanted to say, Tracy, in addition, yes, there are sixty people who we know are gonna have jobs, but there are other opportunities for the remainder on the waterfront and other areas of the city. So just because they weren't hired for the hotel doesn't mean they're not, they're not gonna have an opportunity for employment in the city.
Right. If I, if I went to that and showed, that I showed up every week for ten weeks in the middle of winter, that looks great on your resume to anybody looking to hire. So as much as there's not enough jobs at the hotel for everybody, that's gonna open up doors for everybody there to get a job someplace. Oh, yeah, that's a moral. Right. It, it was, it, it was great. That's all. I mean, it was just a great by I Star, great by Salt, great by Mr. Dow. Let's get that brought up, okay? So it was just great. Thank you. Rita?
Hi. Rita Moran of Eighth Avenue. Uh, I didn't get, uh, my answers on the senior building, not complete answers anyway, and not on comp time at the last meeting. I was wondering if they're complete now with the information that I asked for. The other thing is, um, the bill resolution was five million dollars, five million six. I see that there's three million for retirees from the police department. How many policemen does that represent? And third is CAFRA, I think it's CAFRA, it's C-A-F-R, the without the A, in the bill resolution. And it's almost in every department. How come it's divided like that and how come we're paying CAFRA? I don't get it. And that's it.
You sure that's it?
Well, it's five million six.
No, no, no. Are you sure that's it as far as your questions? Because once you say that's it, I'm not gonna let you get back up to the mic.
Okay, okay. Uh, I think that's it. Yeah. I'll wait for Wednesday for the rest.
Okay, I, I'll find the bills and things. I think it's so high this year, I think what you're talking about with police and fire is the pension payments are due. And that's why it's five million dollars, because we have to make our yearly pension payments. And as far as the CAFRA, I'll find bills and claims. Give me a page.
But, uh, CAFRA? Uh, well, I have them written. It's almost every department.
It's not CAFRA, the state CAFRA, it's not, has nothing to do with the BTR or something like that. It's a, it's a.
Oh, it doesn't have anything to do.
It's an accounting, it just breaks it down by department. That's all it is. It's just, it's just a summary of everything.
It's like if we buy.
But we're paying this, right? It's in the bill resolution.
It's, if you add up all, you'll say office supplies, gas, tires, equals ten dollars. You'll see underneath it, CAFRA for ten dollars. It's just the reporting part of it. It's not being paid, it's just a summary of all the expenses. Louise will help you.
What about the senior building and the comp time that you've been working on?
Uh, I've, for the third time with the senior building, it is part of the deed and part of the redevelopment plan with, um, Interfaith. If Interfaith, who has two spots on the board, wants to change the makeup of the board, they control the vote, Interfaith does not want to change the, the board. Um, for comp time, yes, as I've said in the past and probably on the future, that it has been looked at, it is being reduced. I've asked every department to come up with a plan by the end of the year. Emergency services, police and fire, two years to reduce comp time and unused vacation time to comply with contracts and statutes.
Did you say that, uh, Interfaith doesn't want to change any of the board members?
Yeah.
Well, who are they? I mean, like, what about us?
They're the controlling interest. They have two of the three votes.
They have a signed legal document.
What?
They have a signed legal document that made up the board of directors. And it says two members from Interfaith and one from the city.
Well, who's the one from the city?
It was Tony Nuccio.
Still is until he resigns.
Still is, Tony Nuccio. And they met in January. They had their yearly meeting.
They did a budget, they have minutes, they have audit reports, which I've mentioned, you can open them. But the only way to open that is Interfaith, as a controlling member, has to have two votes. And they're not gonna give up control of the board because why would they?
That's the only way?
Unless somehow the city member can convince one of them to vote against the other. But I don't see that happening either.
So, I mean, Tony Nuccio is gone, isn't he?
No, no.
No, he's, his last day here is May thirtieth, April thirtieth, but he's a board member until he resigns.
Okay, so the next time you pick a board member, pick a taxpayer.
Thank you for your, uh, volunteering.
Oh, you're welcome.
Jan Sparrow, Second Avenue. Uh, there was a pub crawl on Saturday and I would like to pass along our congratulations or thanking the police department for being out there early in the day. And, uh, the, I, everybody downtown, the retailers, all appreciated the fact that there was, I would call, a show of force, that kids were kids, young adults were much better behaved. And we sort of felt like it sent a message that this summer in particular, that we are paying attention, that, uh, we're not going to sort of tolerate behavior that we've seen in the past. So I sort of took a quick poll yesterday and today and everybody felt like it went really well. There wasn't the usual stuff going on. The evening time was good. So, uh, congratulations to whomever said to the police department, could they step up a little bit and check, make sure everything was copacetic? So thank you, pass it along and we really appreciate your trying to help us take care of the downtown community. And I don't know if they were on the boardwalk, the pub crawl at all.
So the only thing I'll say, Jan, is when we, we, we did, the, the council, you know, was in contact with the City Manager, um, and Tony Salerno about the pub crawl. But for the record, when these pub crawls happen, it's, however it's organized, whether it's on Facebook or something, we don't always find out. I mean, we found that one out a day or two before and we were able to get resources down there. So when any of you find out that those happen, it, it's really important for you, because if I don't follow the Ale House on Facebook, I don't know they're having a pub crawl. So, um, the only thing I would ask, I mean, I, I'm really glad it was successful because we found that out kind of late that they were doing it. But anytime the, um, the downtown finds out, these pub crawls are not city events monitored by the city. It's a group of people saying, let's do a pub crawl and go from this bar to this bar to this bar. So the only thing that would be helpful in terms of the retailers and restaurants downtown is to give us a heads up.
We will. But thank you very much because it made a huge difference.
Thank you. And I just have to add, uh, we, we know during the wintertime, we had problems downtown. And anybody knows me, I'm cheap with city dollars. I'm like, no, don't spend unless it's necessary. I mean, the entire council has sent a message loud and clear to the City Manager and to the police acting chief. Whatever it takes to get to zero tolerance, to make sure we're not like a Bellmar from twenty years ago, because we're in April. I mean, i- if not come July, it's gonna be hell to pay. So I don't care if it's every Saturday night and we have to pay overtime, if we have to call on the sheriff's office, if we have to call on whoever and pay for it, we have to set the tone now. And the council is a hundred percent behind that, it's told the administration, and that's a policy decision. Spend the money now because it's gonna be worth it in the long run. Get the message out there, zero tolerance and let, let them be arrested, let them be fined, let them go before the judge and let's set the tone. If, if not, we're gonna lose the city and none of us want to do that.
Mayor, I'd like to add something too, is that please, if there isn't, is an event going on where there is some rowdiness, to call the police department so it can be documented. So during the liquor license renewal process and the, any of the permitting process, the council actually has some teeth and some documentation behind it. Um, I've met with some business owners who say they don't want to make the phone call, but we, I can't stress enough, call the police so it's documented. So when renewals happen, there's actually teeth behind the stuff we need to put into them.
You're, you're absolutely right. I thank you for saying that because we cannot do it. If we put a premise report on somebody and say you have to hire, offer, they're gonna take us to court and they're gonna win because where's your documentation? Nobody called the police. There's been no instances, so police calls are important. Motion to close?
Move it.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public session closed.
Motion to adjourn, to, to move.
All in favor?
Has I thought about saying that?